Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
All right, it is six o'clock. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. I will start with roll call. Councilwoman Goldsmith?
Here.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Here.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Here.
Mayor James here. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, the first item on our agenda is the illicit discharge permit?
And I came to you tonight to present with the illicit discharge. And as you've noticed, we did not have to, we do have to do this. We have to have listed an illicit discharge ordinance as part of our MS4 permit for stormwater. And all we've done is taken that permit right off the state's side of the state's model for the illicit discharge permit. And all it does is makes illicit discharge here in the town will play the final offense. We're required to do that. We are going to work within our fee schedule and we're going to determine what those actual fees would be. But we did have to pass the illicit discharge. And I was just asking you to pass it through. Complex about the requirement for our MS4 permit if you have the state permit.
So what I hear is, thank you for bringing it forward. We don't have a choice. Yeah, good. I'll open it for questions for council.
Just one quick question. Mr. Stoll, thank you because you already answered one of my questions. The other question is on page, I think it's sixteen or seventy-five. It says, the liability, the liability should be paid and not more than is equal payment. I guess that's, that fee, that number is going to be determined?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we're not working within the fee schedule. When Kevin gets back, we've got those fees. These schedules, so that we're not creating fees that aren't balanced.
And so this is being introduced for the first time, or?
It's being introduced, but it's also to ask to be voted on. It's not a requirement to me. You can point them on a fee, unless there's some objection.
And if, if, if there are fines, they would go back into the stormwater management?
Correct.
Budget or pot, whatever it's called?
That is correct.
Okay.
But we're not using that as a credit.
No, I understand. Yes, yes.
It is part of the requirement that we need to have fines associated with illicit discharge. So we will have to do that. Do it accordingly. What we wanted to do was balance it between what we have in the fats, oils, and grease ordinance, the fault that we had, and also the illicit discharge, because basically they're the same.
Thank you.
Yeah, the path for this will be introduction tonight as far as put it on your radar. Then we anticipate bringing it back on the 21st as an emergency ordinance. So tonight is just to bring you all into the awareness and sort of the, I want to say it's a mandate, but pretty darn close. It'll come back as specific legislation at the business meeting in June, which will be the 21st.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward three. Director Stoll, how long have we had our MS4 permit?
Two years, about two years.
Well, so why are we just now getting this, this illicit, what is it? Illicit discharge, yeah.
Well, to be honest, we have been working through a number of the different pieces of the MS4 permit. And it was brought up last fall when we, when we submitted, we do an annual report to MBE in October. And they brought up that they wanted us to go ahead and move forward with the illicit discharge permit. So we're doing it now so that we don't have that as another comment next year. But for the first time, it actually came up as part of the comment section from last fall's report. We are busy on a lot of these different ones and implementing it. We are in our very first phase. The county had their phase, first phase of this five years prior. And so we were part of the Phase Two implementations of MS4. So we were later than what the county originally was. And so we have been working through some of these, making sure that we're complying.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And that brings us to the next one, which is the trash truck purchase.
Baron, I'm coming to you in, I guess with my hat in my hand and in somewhat of a quandary with respect to these purchases. I have before me right here, all four different quotes that we've had for trash trucks in the past year. As you are aware, we ordered a trash truck last June. We have never been able to receive that trash truck. The first price we had was one hundred and sixty-two-nine. The second price we received was one hundred and sixty-four-seven. Back in January, they raised the price again to one hundred and sixty-nine-nine. And the price that you are seeing today is the two oh nine price. And I'm not happy at all with that. I think Tom's Trucks has always been very good to deal with as far as trash trucks. Our intention was to buy the same type of truck that we had. But it is considerably higher than where we were six months ago. They are receiving only five. They ordered thirty trucks last fall. And they're only going to receive five, and they're telling us that those trucks will be delivered this fall. My concern is right now, the trash trucks that we have are, two of them are 2015s. And one is a 2017. We have three trucks. Our intention was to buy a truck in last year's budget and this year's budget. And add two trucks to the fleet. We were intending to leave the two 2015s as spares. So we would be operating with 2022 trucks. And two 2022s and one 2017. Because we are going to go up to three trash trucks. I will tell you that I, I've thought about this very long and hard, because I think Bobby Stoll and me said it's to tell them the hell with it, and I'll buy trucks when, you know, the supply gets better. But to be honest, I don't see in supply getting better. And I think we're going to end up being desperate for trucks sooner than I would like. The trash trucks that we use every day, they're showing signs of wear. And I made the mistake the last time around when we bought the 2015s, I kept the previous two trucks, which were 2004s, for fourteen years, excuse me, for eleven years. And it was too long. The trucks were really costing us in wear and tear. I, I think in doing this, although I'm very opposed to them, really what I think is the declaration of price. I do think we need two trash trucks. And I think that we need them this fall. So I come before you today, not thrilled about how we've been treated in the process. But saying I believe we should purchase two trash trucks at this point, one from last year and one from this year, and hopefully get them delivered in the fall. I don't really see a choice. Because I sure would like to to wait and see if prices came down. But in all honesty, when I look at the economy, where things are, where the truck backlogs are, I just don't see it. And so I believe that the best thing for the town is to continue in service mode, and that means we're going to need trucks. So I bring this before you today. We have two hundred thousand in last year's, two hundred fifty thousand, excuse me, in last year's budget, and we have another in this year's budget. So it's well within the budget.
Okay, so I understand it's within the budget. I have a hard time with a forty-six thousand, three hundred dollar raise of price in that. And is Tom's Truck the only place, I know they're out of Virginia, in the Delmarva area that will be able to get a truck?
Well, the the answer to that is no, it's certainly not the only place. But I will tell you in checking with suppliers, everybody's the same way. The problem is that they have the bodies, the bodies are sitting there. It's really the Kenworth truck, which is a Pacmore Industries vehicle. We would like to stay with the Kenworth truck and the Pacmore body, only because we have three others. And we'd like to keep them all the same, because that way we can stock parts for all of them. It's the same engines, the same gears, the same transmissions. So it makes some sense standpoint that we're stocking parts for the same vehicles and they all five of them are the same. You've been very serviceable for us. But you are correct. I mean, it is something where they're turning around. But to be honest, I, I, my belief is in this situation that because Kenworth is so far behind, they demand what price they want for the vehicle. It's just like with car dealerships today. You know, they're adding a dealer fee to a truck. And, you know, you're not, the chance of getting a vehicle less than sticker price today is slim to none. Because nobody's discounting it all. They're asking, you know, the going rate plus some. And I'm afraid that's what's happening in this case.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, we got the MML coming up, and they usually have all kinds of distributors and sales and such and that nature. Is there any, do you see any opportunity to see competing people in that MML conference for dumped, for trash trucks at all? Or do you know who's going to be there?
Well, Tom's is always there.
Yeah.
I mean, they've always been there. There have been a big, you know, they work very closely with a lot of municipalities. They generally can be the cheapest provider. But as I say, it's really not Tom's trucks that is really the problem. It's really the bigger manufacturer of the actual chassis. The challenge situation, they're just not able to get the chassis.
Well, we're all experiencing what these increases are here in the last three, four months, such gas prices, vehicle prices, as you said, you're not going to get below sticker price. The idea of negotiating a lower price nowadays is almost nonexistent, as I say. So, yeah, I think we're probably stuck. Although, do you want to see if you get anything better talking to people at the conference or not? Or do you need to get some help?
I, my feeling is that I'm not sure we'll get anywhere with that. And as, you know, postponed, my, my hope, and the only reason I bring this before you, it is very against my nature to do this. But I do feel as though it is a service that we have always been very on top of and trying to keep our trucks maintained well so that we can provide a service to the community. And I think that if we, you know, don't keep a newer thing in that situation, it's very hard to provide that service because there just aren't that many out there. I mean, we have, we're using three every single day. And when you use three of them every day, the two that will be spares in that situation will help us out. Right now, we have three trucks. And so I do think it does become harder to do that. So I, I don't think this is a very good opportunity for any kind of negotiation. It's really just a matter of trying to get the truck ordered and try to ensure, because I, you know, as I said, and I apologize, but I'm not sure that I can do anything about it. It's that, you know, I've come back to the council now three different times with three price increases, and now this one is a major price increase. But I, I honestly believe that what's happened in this situation is Tom's Truck is saying, you know, look, we're going to go out here and we're going to put our price on this truck. And if people don't mind, that's fine, because we're only going to get five of them. And if they don't want the, the truck, okay, we'll just move to the next customer who might want that. And that's what I'm afraid is going to happen.
By the nature of this type of vehicle, the used market is just not an option, I don't think, is it?
Not for us, generally. We run hard every day. It has been something where I, my strong belief is that we have to keep, you know, the trucks within, I mean, your time starting is what we really need to look at in this, and then put them in a, you know, as a spare, once they get to that range. Here again, they are experiencing some maintenance issues. And so we have been spending additional money. And we find the newer trucks are cheaper. You know, because maintenance doesn't keep it down, it doesn't keep making us switch trucks around. But we have had several instances where we bought a truck from any of that in recent times, so.
Director Stoll? This quote is dated May 24th. They typically don't last that long. So how long is this quote for? And why didn't they total and subtotal this up?
I can't tell you why they didn't. I totaled it up. It's, I can certainly ask that that be redone. I, I have been in touch with Karen Johnson, who is head of sales for Tom's. And she did tell me that she was going to hold this quote until we had some sort of action tonight. I told her we were bringing it before the council. And it's, and I'm, listen, if the direction from the council was not to purchase the trucks and to go out and to do this, then I would do that. But I'm not sure I could come back to her, ask her to make sure that we have them.
So the quote is only good from the 24th until tonight?
Probably.
Okay.
I told her to be in touch with her tomorrow to see what direction we were headed.
Okay. And you said that we ordered a truck last year and didn't get it?
We have not. We ordered the truck right when you all came in office last June, which was going to be part of the July budget. Remember, I came in and it was one of the very first actions we did was to order the truck, and you all approved the order of the truck, which was originally one hundred and sixty-two thousand. We have never received that truck.
What was the explanation for not, for us not receiving it?
They haven't been able to get the chassis. They just don't have the chassis. So Kenworth has not been providing any trucks to them. And so they, they have all these bodies, they have trash bodies sitting there ready for trucks, and we just haven't been able to get them.
But Kenworth is going to provide the chassis to Tom's Truck?
They indicated to Tom's Truck that they will have five trucks in the fall. They will be delivered sometime during the third quarter is what they're telling us. They ordered thirty.
So?
Are only getting five.
So this price will be good until the fall?
That's my understanding.
So Director Stoll, we ordered a truck last year.
Correct.
Haven't received it.
Correct.
Does that mean they canceled our order? Or is that older orders?
Kenworth did not carry through their portion of bringing, see, Tom's Truck only provides the bodies.
Okay, so we have that.
They buy Kenworth trucks, they buy Freightliner trucks, they buy all these other different kinds of trucks. The bottom line is, is that they just told us, sorry, we're not getting the trucks. We can't do this. And if you want to order a truck, here's what the new price is. And that's what they've done to us every time. It's not a, it's, it's very hard to say that we have a contract for this. But we, we've always felt like we had a contract for it. But they have not been able to get the trucks. And it's a very strange time for us right now.
Let me get this so I can wrap my head around this. We approved one hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred plus tax
Correct.
back in 2021, May of 2021. You entered in a contract with the, the company and said, we want a, we want this, here's the price. So it's a contract. And now they're saying, hey, and it was with Tom's Truck?
It was.
Okay, so again, very simple mind here. So Tom's Truck says, oh yeah, sorry, we can't get you the truck that you put a contract on in May of 2021 for one sixty-two-nine. So we're done with that. Hey, it's June 2022. We can get you a truck that you requested in May of 2021, but now it's going to cost you two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred dollars, forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars more, because we're not honoring the contract that we entered. I don't know how you can explain it to me, but to me, that is the hugest bait and switch I've ever heard of. And boy, I think that that is criminal to do that. And why would we do business with them?
I will certainly take that back. That's the answer. I, I don't disagree in this situation, but here again, when it, you know, they're a Pacmore dealer. You know, if you want to put the truck together like we've been doing with the Pacmore body and the Kenworth truck, they buy the Kenworth truck from Manassas Kenworth over there. They have a relationship there with Manassas Kenworth. And, you know, to be honest, they're just not getting the new trucks.
But they're getting it now for forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars more than they did back then. So did they put in writing that we are canceling your contract of May of 2021? I mean, they haven't filled it, but to me, and again, I'm very simple on this. To me, you have an open contract. And it is when the truck comes in, we will fulfill this contract. Okay, so, and I guess this is a question for our legal department. We've got an open contract for one sixty-two-nine plus tax that was executed in May of 2021.
Actually, given their price increase that they requested back in January, I came back to you and we gave them the pricing.
So one sixty-nine, okay, so we, they didn't, so we have been playing this game a little bit.
Yes.
So they've had it from May till January, and they did a seven thousand dollar increase on us. And we said,
Now, let me, let me clarify. We didn't put any money down on these trucks?
It doesn't matter, but we have.
The truck and said,
We ordered the truck.
We have council approval. They knew this. We've got emails that are filed up with them to say, please order the truck for us as expected.
Is there an email that has said, yes, we will order the truck?
They have, yes.
Okay. And is there an email that says, oh, by the way, we're canceling your now updated January 2022 contract?
There was no contract.
Indicated, they just have not gotten any trucks.
But, but now they have a truck for forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars more.
They have a supposed commitment from Kenworth for delivery in the fall. They do not have these trucks now.
So what my question is, is okay, so we say today, all right, we missed out on the one sixty-two-nine, we missed out on the one sixty-four-seven, we missed out on the one sixty-nine-nine, all that we have, have committed to. So now we're going to commit to two oh nine-two. And we're going to say the same procedure that we have done since May 2021 and said, here you go, we'd like to order this. And then they come back in the fall and go, hmm, you know what, now it's two thirty-nine.
Well, I think what my intention to do this time around is to actually enter into a contract.
Because there was no contract. This is just an email conversation.
It was.
Okay, so there's no contract.
So there is no, there is no, but there is an offer.
But it's not a contract.
The, the quote is an offer. And what you have, the thing that creates a contract is offer and acceptance.
Did they accept your offer?
They did. They said, we, we, we went and emailed them back. Their, their quote, which they sent us, which we have copies of all the quotes and have all the emails, they've sent those over, which is their offer to us. We will sell you a truck for X amount.
For one sixty-nine-nine.
Correct. When we step back and say, we have council approval for this, please order this truck based on this quote, that's acceptance on our part. So I think you have offer and acceptance, which in my mind is a contract in that situation. And, you know, but they're kind of stuck because they're in the middle too. They don't have the chassis to be able to put that truck on.
But they have a chassis that's going to be forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars more?
Because the cost of that truck went up from Kenworth. That's the real.
In my opinion, again, I'm not an attorney, we have a contract that we updated January 2022 that says we will pay one sixty-nine-nine plus tax. And that was agreed upon, as you have just said, that we said, yes, we will, okay, we will accept your increase of seven thousand dollars. So right then and there, we have meeting of the minds, we both agree it's one sixty-nine-nine. Now, all of a sudden, that truck, which is magically appearing in the fall for an additional, okay, it's going to be forty, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars from this January one. Where does it stop? What happens when they say in the fall, you know what, we've got that?
I don't disagree. I mean, I'm, listen, as I said, I'm
And we signed the.
My hat, my hand tonight, but I do think we have to also need trucks to do what we have to do. And as you know, we've had these other times. I mean, we tried to buy a crane truck. And the bottom line is, they promised me the day before this meeting that they were going to have that truck. And the day that we approved it, we called them the next morning, and the truck had already been sold. And they sold it right out from underneath them. That's what's happening in the market today. It's very hard to get new trucks. It's very hard to have things happen. Listen, I'm not, but I'm not going to say that, you know, it's, it's, it's certainly not a great deal.
I don't understand the deal. I just, I absolutely cannot wrap my head around this. And I think that really our attorney should look into this. I don't know where it ends. If there is a contract where they've accepted our increased price of seven thousand dollars, how the heck are we even going to turn around and give them another forty thousand dollars just because they're like, oops? Because they see the supply and demand, the same truck that was going to come here is now going to get here in the fall for.
I'm, I'm the first one to admit that in this case, you know, they're, they're going to sell them. I mean, if they're only getting five trucks, they're going to turn around and sell them for what they can get it for.
This, this certainly doesn't seem like to me and maybe others, like a quote contract that I'm used to, where there, where it's in writing, and there's warranties, and there's guarantees, and there's acceptance, and there's other clauses that talk about price increases, and also those penalties if they don't fulfill them, if each party doesn't fulfill their part of the obligation that's in the contract.
Did Kevin do a purchase?
Right, that's.
He have not. He has never done anything. We have bought every single truck where we just all of it and saying, here's what we're doing. And this is two trucks, two trucks.
No, that's for one truck.
Yeah, minus for one, but I'm asking for two at this point, just because we need trucks. So I'm happy to go back and see what I can do, but I honestly.
I am so steamed right now. I think that it should be our attorney looking into this, because that is unethical. Unethical. I don't know how you can say it any other way than you have, the only thing that's, that they have in their favor is that there wasn't a purchase order done by Kevin. But how can you do business with someone who is like that?
And I'm not sure that purchase order would give anything other than just a piece of paper. I mean, the bottom line is for us, you know, we, we have always done it this way. We've always purchased trucks under, you know, an offer and acceptance. You have a quote, you have an acceptance of the quote. The trucks have come in, we pay them, they, they actually deliver the truck and give us an invoice, and we actually write them the check for the invoice when it comes in. We bought the last three trucks through Tom's Truck, doing it the exact same way. So it's just a very different time right now. Things are very, very difficult to get.
And I think that's the problem. I mean, unfortunately, well, well, I mean, yes, times, I mean, it's, frankly, it bothers me when, when, well, that's the way they've always done it. Well, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's right, particularly when things change like this. And so from my perspective, at a minimum, and I know Mr. Stoll and the town needs trucks, but we shouldn't be held hostage. So in the interim, at a minimum, perhaps our town attorney should review the emails and frankly, write them or call them and call them out and say, you know, we're not particularly happy with the way we're being treated with respect to the fact that we're longtime customers, and we feel like we're being held hostage. Because frankly, as Councilwoman Bryant Ward said earlier, what happens in the fall? Oh, by the way, we, we, we're not going to raise the price, whatever they're going to do. That, to me, is not the way to do business. And we should be doing business with them. And we should be doing business with them.
Seven thousand dollars, and we honor that. We weren't happy with that, I'm sure. And, and now they're coming in with an additional thirty-nine thousand dollars from May, I mean, from January twenty twenty-two? Oh, yeah, I think we need to, to look at, um, other sources and, and. I really, as I said, I strongly feel that our attorney should look into this, that. He may say there is no contract, but I think that is one hundred percent unethical. And I don't. I don't see us doing business with them in the future, um, if this is the way they play.
Well, I would certainly, you know, they, they will all be over there at, I'm sure they always have been, you know, at M M L.
I look forward to meeting with them.
Um, it'd be helpful to, uh, to speak with them about that. But I will tell you, this is very unprecedented time in trying to get, you know, manufacturing hit shutdown, but just there's, there's nothing available.
But they didn't cancel the contract.
Right, I mean, but, but, but I, I mean, we get that. It, it is difficult times, but they are not being transparent. And providing good customer relations to you and to us. I get that. It is, so why don't they just be honest and transparent? And talk to us and put something in writing and try to honor it. See, that, that, that's just unfortunate to me, another excuse. I, I mean, just be transparent about it.
Director Stahl, in my opinion, and I've got three other people who can definitely shoot me down on this one. In my opinion, I would like you to go back to them and say, thank you for the offer, but we'd like your January, the January, uh, twenty twenty-two. The one for one thousand, uh, six hundred, uh, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. We'd like to stick with that one. Thank you. It's a contract.
So my, my concern is, is that you, you're correct. They gave us a quote. And if we sign the quote within the time allowed, and we accepted their quote, then that was an acceptance. It's not a contract. It is simply that we accepted their offer and we would have expected to get the truck when it became available. If it didn't become available when it became one hundred and sixty-four-seven, why would they even make another offer? And if it didn't become available when they made it, they gave us a price of one hundred and sixty-nine-nine, why would they accept the offer? And now we're saying two hundred and nine thousand, it, where, where does it end? Um, I'm just not comfortable with, you know, them giving us a quote and us accepting. Even though they didn't total it up, that makes no sense to me because it's not a complete quote and to be minus the taxes. Um, they could have been estimated the taxes. They know the state that we're in. Um.
We don't pay, so we don't pay the tax.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't have to pay tax because we're a municipality. We don't, we don't pay tax on that.
Okay, it just said not, not.
Yeah.
But we don't pay tax, so that's not.
Okay, so the two oh-nine, you, you went from May to, um, I don't know when the one sixty-four-seven, um, was an offer. But you went from May to January, um, seven months, seven, eight months. Hundred and sixty-nine, only seven thousand increase. And here we are, um, from January to May. And it went up thirty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. That's.
I, listen.
I don't know if it's ethics.
I'm not disagreeing because I honestly saw this myself.
I understand.
Turn around. I'm not trying to defend it. I mean, I, I, I think it's absolutely. You know, against my nature to do this, but.
This is the case where we should get more than one.
I need trucks to do what I have to do every day.
This is the case where we should.
It is, I'm not sure what to.
We should have gotten more quotes, as opposed to doing business with people that we're accustomed to doing business with. I think when they changed the price those many times, we should have gotten additional quotes.
Well, I, I don't disagree, um, but I will say that having been buying these trucks for quite some time.
I understand.
Uh, Toms has always been considerably lower than the other vendors. And I think when we go back and you start seeing what the other vendors will do in this situation, you're gonna be. Even less happy with what we get from the other vendors.
But we don't know what we're gonna pay for it anyway.
There's plenty of other manufacturers out there with Neilis, um, you know, with Freightliner trucks, with Mack trucks. You know, we've had to, we've had to do where it's different, uh, vendors, but the last time around. Uh, you know, Toms with the pack more body was always thirty and forty thousand dollars less than the other vendors.
Right, but we, at this point, we don't know what we're gonna pay for this truck, if we get this truck.
Well, our intention was with this was to go ahead and to work on a contract. And that's what I told Karen is that we're gonna actually enter into a contract with money down, which we've never done in the past. But our intention was to go ahead and to purchase the body with the guarantee that the first trucks that they get in in the fall. Would be that, which would be delivered for the town on a plate.
Fantastic. Go with the one sixty-nine-nine for the contract. Cause that is just.
Certainly take that back.
Uh, Councilman Goldsmith?
Yeah, one of the things you want to keep the same trucks because you've got supplies and stuff already there.
Correct.
Mechanics know how to work on that particular truck. And there's, there's economy of scale when you do something like that. But if it's this particular truck manufacturer is gonna be that much more expensive, are the other ones gonna be any cheaper?
I, I seriously doubt it.
Okay, and, and if, if they are, if we can find them cheaper, maybe it's time to change the truck and start building up.
Listen, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that I have any kind of love for the Kenworth. I mean, they have been, they've been serviceable trucks for us, but I would certainly go back and change, uh, chassis manufacturers. You know, to be honest, um, a, a pack car engine, they, they have pack car engines, but they're Cummins engines. So Cummins is literally putting seventy percent of the, uh, the diesel engines over the road today. Uh, so, you know, almost all the manufacturers are gonna have that same, uh, Cummins engine, much likely. Um, it is an Allison transmission, which is a very common Allison automatic transmission and could be in all of the trucks. Really, the only thing you're getting is the chassis and the frame, uh, from, uh, from Kenworth. I, I'm gonna have to go back and.
Director Stahl, can you, and Brent, you're gonna have to talk me off the ledge right now. I'm a little excited here.
So we, we, there are four of us up here, so we.
That's right. Um, can we see if Director Stahl and whether it's Kevin and our attorney. Whatever it is, look at the January quote that we re-entered into. See if there is a way to hold their feet to the fire on that one. Um, because we did enter it in good faith. Otherwise, as we all have indicated, where does it end? I know that they could get it then, but we've been dealing with them for quite some time. And see if there's anything that we can do. I, I hate to go down the legal way, but I'm not paying forty thousand dollars more. Of taxpayers' money for something that was promised for one sixty-nine-nine. I just think, as I said several times, criminal.
Yeah, I think to clarify is that the will of the council for me to go back to Jay and try to determine whether. What we had constitutes a contract, one, and two, for Bobby to go back to the vendor and request the previous quote. Is that the, is that correct understanding?
Pretty much, yeah. And I think at the conference here in two weeks' time, we need to descend upon the.
Do you think an open conversation is good, but, um, I will applaud them for asking. I think that was, um, hey, you don't know unless you ask, but I don't think that's ethical for them to do that.
Well, I will tell you that in all procurements today. It is extremely difficult for all procurements. It is incredible for what you have to jump through to get deliveries, to get things priced in. It is, it is a, because of inflation and because of the sheer lack of availability of product. It has put us in a time as far as procurements are concerned, that people are naming their prices. You know, to be honest, you, you know, look at gasoline. You can buy gasoline in Georgia and I think. Uh, Arkansas for four dollars a gallon. And you can go out to California and gasoline is ten dollars a gallon. And it's the same product. It hasn't changed anything. And it's just the availability. It's that it's, you know, there's so many more, um, that people can just name their price and say, this is what we're selling for.
Well, but, but Director Stahl, from seven thousand dollars to thirty-nine thousand, one hundred, I don't think that that's a supply chain issue. And I think that we really do need to at least get another quote. You know, the procurement process says three quotes, and we only have one because we're accustomed to doing business with Toms. But Toms is not valuing us as a customer to go from seven thousand to thirty-nine thousand dollars in the same span. That truck did not get that much more expensive. The supply chain issues are not because of products. It's because of manual labor to put things together. But they don't have to do anything. If they get the products that you've ordered. That they've given you on this, this quote, that there's no issue there. And if they can get the truck. Because they didn't get it in May, they didn't get it in January. If they can get the truck, they need to give us the truck. For the price that we accepted.
I, I will comment that my daughter-in-law, uh, works for a major piping company. You guys deal with many of these too. They won't even put a price nowadays. You wanna place an order, we'll order it for you, and when we get the materials, we'll see what the price is then. That's what's.
That's not a switching bait, though. This is, this is, this is not right. Thirty-nine, it didn't get thirty-nine thousand dollars more expensive. Than it did seven months ago when it was seven thousand dollars.
I, I can't answer that because I don't see what they're paying for the chassis. I don't know what they paid for the bodies. I think part of, uh, sorry, sorry. The, um, I think part of the challenge is that. You know, and they're not getting the trucks. And, you know, they wanted thirty, and they're getting five. I think, to be honest, that they're trying to ensure that they're still at least semi-profitable. By adding additional, uh, overhead onto the cost of the trucks. To cover the cost of the fact that they're not able to sell as many trucks as they would have in the past.
Their overhead didn't go up. Their overhead didn't go up because they didn't get thirty thousand dollars. They did, they didn't get.
Difference is, they, before, they were splitting their overhead by thirty vehicles. If they were selling thirty vehicles. Now they're only selling five.
Do they only have five trucks on their entire inventory of anything? Do they not have any other product?
The only thing they're able to do is to sell used trucks, and they've been selling used trucks. And things have been at, you know, an exceptional, uh, profit in those areas. Which has been keeping Toms because they do deal in them. But the other manufacturers, I will tell you, everybody's been telling us on truck side. It's very, very hard to do business because they just don't have any inventory. I mean, I, I can tell you, I was over. Uh, in Colorado County the other day, Bayside Chevrolet, and Bayside Chevrolet over there had no vehicle. The whole, uh, block was bare, uh, because they had no vehicles, uh, to sell.
The people who signed the first five quotes should have gotten, should get the first five trucks.
Right, that was this, I agree.
And we signed in a, in a quote back in May, and again in July, we should have gotten, in January, we should have gotten the truck.
I, I, I don't disagree. I mean, I do feel, but I don't like coming before you. I like. I'm the kind of person that brings used vehicles in front of you. I try to bring good deals to the front of you.
And you do.
Feel good about this, and I said that. I feel tremendously burned, but on the other side of the coin. We do have to pick up trash.
I understand.
Single day.
I understand.
Our challenge is with older vehicles, it is very difficult to provide good service when you don't have vehicles behind you to be able to do that.
I understand. Director Stahl, you do a great job with us.
Everyone understands that.
We totally understand, but the thirty-nine thousand dollars, you know.
I, I'm not gonna argue that. That's, that's, that's a given. I'm, I'm not happy with coming, but I also. Read about, you know, another year reading in line because. That's one of the problems. The backlog is so bad in trucks right now. That it is literally, if, if you're probably out there, you, you may be looking at another year getting trucks.
Hopefully something will open up, but I do think we need to explore this a little bit more. And I am confident that they will see it our way with one thousand, uh, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars.
I am more than happy to do that and take it off the table.
Better hire another mechanic. I'm sorry. Better hire another mechanic.
We are. We're in the process. As you know, I, I'm, as fast as I'm hiring them. We're losing them to the line, so it's, it's a challenge. But, I mean, luckily Danny's still with us and we're trying to hire Angus manager as we speak, so we're, we're looking.
Well, thank you very much for a lively discussion.
You won't come back again.
He'll be there when he's like, can I have James here?
I, listen, I understand.
Nah, I, I appreciate it. Um, alright, following up on that one. Come on down, Miss Harrington. What do you have for us?
You better talk.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I'm before you, uh, to propose a new permitting software. In twenty sixteen, the town purchased the EnerGov, uh, permitting software through Tyler Technologies. And for several years, it did the basic things that needed to do. Um, it, it's running off of an older plugin called Silverlight. On June fifteenth, which is next week, uh, Internet Explorer goes away and Silverlight will no longer be available. We did purchase a upgrade, um, not only in twenty nineteen when we attempted to integrate. A citizen self-service portal, EnerGov e-pay, um, and other such software. Uh, to date, that none, none of that is working. It has never been integrated. It has never been pushed out to the public. Um, and none of my issues have been resolved through I T online support. So, we just did an additional upgrade, um, back two months ago. To basically make our software a cloud-based software to get rid of the Silverlight plugin. Two months ago, that upgrade was done. Two months later, it is still not functioning. Um, I've had tickets in with online support, um, and I've, uh, sent them updates. And today, the last email I got was, well, escalate this up the chain, and if you don't hear from someone by the end of the week, let me know. And I'll see if I can escalate it again. Again, fifteenth, which is next week, our permitting software will not work. So if, I highly doubt that we're gonna be able to get the test site functioning. Uh, get everyone trained and everything before the fifteenth. So it became very apparent, and after speaking with our I T consultants, um, we, we need to start looking at something else. What other products are out there? And it was kind of by fate that I was looking through my emails one day. And the International Code Council set out an email regarding Munacity, which is a permitting software that they oversee. So we did a online demo. Um, everything looked really good to staff, so we did an in-house demo, and I included our I T consultant. The good thing about this software is that it's completely cloud-based. So there will be no data on our servers. We will not have to utilize any server space or any I T functions to keep this moving. It would all be hosted by, um, the International Code Council through Munacity. So there's a, a cost comparison, um, that our I T consultant put together just to kind of show. The difference between Tyler, um, and the EnerGov product and the Munacity product. The initial installation cost is seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. ARPA funding can be used to fund a portion of that or all of that if there's funds available. Uh, we do also have the EnerGov funds in our budget that we could use instead of, um, giving it back to EnerGov. We could put it towards Munacity. The, uh, maintenance and support, as you can see, is higher than what EnerGov was. Uh, EnerGov is generally around, um, eight thousand dollars. And, and Munacity is in the fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand dollar range. However, when you look down at the hardware and infrastructure, we're not paying anything for that anymore. Everything would be hosted by them. So you look at the difference, um, and it's actually a much better deal. The program itself is similar to EnerGov. Uh, however, when we actually did the demos and looked at how it functions, it looks like it functions and has a lot better integr- integrability. Uh, with each of the different programs of work. So right now, everything in EnerGov has a separate, um, program. So if you're doing code violations, if you wanna see anything to do with code violations, you have to actually go into code violations and search. In that program. Uh, whereas with this one, you can search an address and you can see any permits, plans, code violations, sign permits. Anything that has to do with that address across the entire software. So that is actually very beneficial for my staff. As we're, uh, we work together a lot, you know, our, um, Debbie works with Aaron. If he's done a citation, she'll write up the invoice. If he's done a citation, she'll write up the invoice. So it'd be very helpful for us to see what everyone is doing. It also appears to be a lot more functional just from a user basis. Um, EnerGov is quite technical, um, and it's difficult to use. There's several staff that just refuse to use it because it really doesn't function very well. So I think overall it's a better product. Um, I think it will serve, uh, us a lot better. Um, so then it's just a determination of, um, how we want to fund it, if there is ARPA funding available. Um, and again, like I said, we will have funds from our general planning budget that would have gone towards EnerGov that we can use as well. Uh, and then Blue Beam, um, which is the additional licensing that would carry over. They do integrate with Blue Beam, which we already have a license for, so we wouldn't have to purchase anything additional. And it will also integrate in with our existing in-code financial system and credit card system. So they would actually do all of the work as far as taking the data from our servers, putting it into their software program and, and finishing all of that out for us. So our IT wouldn't have to be involved. So that's what I'm before you tonight. Uh, I'm very frustrated with EnerGov and customer service. And, um, uh, so far the, uh, MuniCity group have been very responsive, very polite and have been willing to answer all of our questions. So you never have a guarantee on how things will work out 10 years down the line, as we're seeing with EnerGov. Uh, but, uh, I think we're ready to take that leap and take that chance with MuniCity if the council would agree.
Thank you. And I know we were so excited about EnerGov when it came on a few years ago and just the prospects. And, and you all rolled it out slowly to make sure that you worked out the kinks, which is great because I know that the county uses EnerGov and they were having a lot of problems. Um, I appreciate you, uh, really looking into other, um, avenues because it is frustrating. Yes, I hate, um, seeing that we did spend some, a few dollars on that one. But in looking at the, um, comparison between the year 2023 and, um, of EnerGov and then MuniCity, it looks like it'll actually cost us after the initial seventy-three thousand dollars. It'll actually, looks like it will cost us less.
Yes, because we won't be hosting the data. So because we don't have to use our IT, uh, contract and hosting the data on our servers, which does cost money, uh, that would be put towards them hosting the data for us. So it ultimately will save us money in the long run. It will be more expensive upfront, but over time we'll see those benefits.
So, so Director Harrington, thank you. Why did, um, hardware and infrastructure for EnerGov go from fifteen hundred dollars to seventeen thousand in 2022 to 2023?
Because that is where we, um, are doing all these upgrades. But like I said, we just did a, an upgrade. Um, I don't, the, the IT consultant provided me these numbers, so I don't know exactly what goes into hardware and infrastructure and how much that costs. Um, but I imagine that that has to do with the differences in the programming and how we store that data on our servers and utilize IT services.
That's a huge jump. It, it started out at forty-five hundred, fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred, and then it goes to seventeen thousand. It's not a typo.
I'll have to check on that. I don't know.
It just seems unreal to me. I can understand the first year startup cost in 2020, but every year it's been around thirteen thousand, then all of a sudden it's twenty-seven.
Yeah.
I can definitely check on that.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, I looked at the same thing. Should it be one thousand seven hundred dollars or should be, yeah, on that.
Not sure. Like I said, we had those, uh, numbers provided from IT. So it could be a, a typo or we could have something that we need to purchase a new, a new server, which aren't cheap.
I know servers aren't, but.
Actually, that may make sense. Because the, if I remember correctly, EnerGov stated that we didn't have enough server space. So we'd have to purchase an entirely new server. So that's probably where that is.
Okay, I'll accept that.
Who else is using this? Um, what other municipalities or, uh, counties?
So there isn't a lot in Maryland. There are, if you go to their website, you do see several places in New York, Pennsylvania, and they all have very good reviews of the project or of the product. Um, but I haven't seen any in Maryland. So, um, it looks like we'd be one of the first or maybe close to the first in Maryland to get the. But I do like the fact that it's through the International Code Council and all of the codes would already be implemented into the product currently. I have to sit there and type in every single code, um, in the backend, uh, for it to populate in a report. All of that would just be available.
What kind of contract? Would, Bobby, so not against you, but what kind of contract would enter into? Obviously, the seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen is the contract, but what are they going to guarantee us?
So the, per the, uh, initial quote that's on the agenda, um, they have the, uh, proposal overview. The quote, um, that is presented, uh, is valid for three months. So we would have until August 23rd of 2022 to make the decision. Um, I think it would be good to kind of stick with the fiscal year, uh, to make that decision. And also, uh, just judging by how things are moving right now, uh, we should probably get this moving as soon as possible because it is a six to eight month implementation. Uh, luckily, we already have most of the data that they're going to need upfront. Uh, we already did all of that with EnerGov, so it's just plugging that into whatever their formatting is. Um, so that'll take out the initial, um, month or two that it normally would take. We could cut that down by half, but it's still a good six-month implementation and training period to get a new product up and running for, for us.
What happens in the interim?
We figure it out. Um, go back to using Excel files. Uh, that's what we did prior to EnerGov. It's not fun, but again, if we can't get things moving by June fifteenth, we're not going to have it to use anyway.
Right.
So we are already preparing, uh, to create basically, uh, Excel project, uh, info, info sheets that we would use for each permit and each project. And then we could just provide that to MuniCity to plug in on the backend.
Director Stahl.
I was just going to say, Mayor, you know, we did this last year. The, the, uh, operations department moved away from EnerGov last year. And we went with Asset Essentials. And so you all did, we, we were having the, the very similar issues. Their customer service was horrible. We were having so many technical problems. So we did do that last year. If you remember, we came, it was Dune Solutions.
Yeah.
It's called Asset Essentials now.
Mm-hmm.
But we did move away and we went with the cloud-based software, uh, for operations.
How's that been working?
It's been working well. And then we, we all have, uh, you know, on our iPads, so that the guys can see work orders. We've been, you know, programming work orders and, and putting everything in. Listen, the transition is never easy. It's always a problematic transition over. But I think after a while, you just, you're frustrated with the service that EnerGov gives and we just have to move on and bite the bullet to do that. I do think, you know, Director Harrington is making the right decision to go with a cloud-based, uh, software. It's, it's a big challenge to, to, uh, do the upgrade as we found with Asset Essentials. But the, the line is it's the right way to go. I, I think it's certainly better to have something that's more user-friendly and you know, service longer because EnerGov certainly was not that for operation.
Nor for us. And the other good thing about it is since it's cloud-based, it could be utilized from anywhere. Um, PlanCheck, McCrone, any of our outside contractors can log in and do their own plan reviews, their own inspections a lot easier. Uh, right now, they don't have that capability. They would have to have VPN connection in order to get into our system. And of course, we don't like doing that just for security reasons. So the way that this is set up, you know, I can have the actual contractors, um, either for permit or plan reviews, actually put in their own reviews, their comments, including inspections. And the good thing about doing all of this upfront together is that the actual citizen portal that comes as part of this would be available on day one.
I looked over this information and of course you and I have had a conversation. And I think that if it makes your life easier and it's more efficient, um, it's, I just worry if, um, it doesn't work out. You know, what kind of guarantee do we have? You know, uh, if it's, their customer service may be better or it, their customer service may exist.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That would be a, a huge thing there, but you do this every day. You know, just like, uh, Director Stahl said, it, it wasn't working for them and they found a replacement. If, in my opinion, if that's what you need to do to be more productive, uh, and we can fund it through the money that we have already set aside for EnerGov and use ARPA funding, then, um, I, I, I'm in favor of it.
If it makes you happy, it makes me happy.
Not worried about making you happy, but making sure that you can do your work, that's important.
And allow for the public to be able to use, so I, I support that.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. Well, first, I, I feel your pain. And so I appreciate you finally biting the bullet and moving on because I remember when I was here and they were, Tyler was difficult, to say the least. Um, so not to beat a dead horse, but is there any possibility of, uh, getting money back from them or something? Or some kind of a refund or something? Because frankly, they haven't performed for a long time.
That is again, another conversation for the town attorney. So depending on how things go and what we've, um, I did have Kevin provide me a cost breakdown of everything that we've purchased from them.
Okay.
So we need to go back to the town attorney, look at the contracts that we have in place and see what, if anything, we can do to leverage getting any kind of refund.
And you've already answered the question about how long it will take to implement it. And you talked about staff training. So, and I think I read that it's tied into our GIS system, so that can be pretty seamless.
It, yes, it will be tied into our GIS system.
Okay.
And they also have, uh, integration with Google Maps. Should you be out in the town or, you know, out and about and you don't have Wi-Fi or you don't have mobile connectivity, you'll still at least have Google Maps that you can go off of.
And I thought you mentioned that it's tied into finance in terms of billing.
It will, uh, integrate in with in-code. Um, the same way that EnerGov interacts with it right now. It's basically at the end of the day, I don't know the details.
But, but there'll be a connection. They'll be able to work together then. They'll be integrated.
Yes.
Okay, and then I don't know whether this is necessary. Would it be tied into, uh, public works, I mean, anywhere? Or is that necessary? I don't know.
It would not be tied in since they are using Dune Solutions. That would not be tied in with what we're doing. Um, I think that they're kind of two separates, um, items that they're doing work orders and I'd be looking for inspections.
Okay.
So that would be a little bit different in what they're using it for.
And then I think what the mayor alluded to, uh, will there be some kind of performance warranty in this new contract with this new company? I mean, are they going to have a warranty standards to meet?
I don't know off the top of my head. That's something we can certainly look into and, and raise that question with them, if it's not in the proposal.
And then just finally, I, I, I think it was already said, it certainly is important. So we have transparency with the public so they can track it too.
That's been my most frustrating part.
Yes.
That we're permitted to have a public portal and it does not work. And I've refused to push it out because it does not work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to look for a consensus to see if we can bring it back on the 21st. All right, we've got, uh, Councilman Goldsmith is a yay, Councilman Ryan Ward.
I'm good.
All right, consensus is here.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Um, next on the agenda is capital improvements plan and schedule fees, outstanding matters discussion. Um, and that would be the amazing Martha that is here. I'm sure you are. I, I don't, we want, we want you to stick around for a while. Yeah, Council, do you have any questions? I mean, I think that we have been emailing, uh, Kevin back and forth, um, or having a conversation with him. I certainly don't have any questions that are unanswered.
Just Madam Mayor, I, I just have a couple of questions on the, on the two additional documents he sent us a couple of weeks ago, and I'll forward them to Mr. Greenville. It's just a couple of questions, that's all.
Good, get to that.
Um, Martha, you dodged a bullet here.
I'm glad to see you here though. Thank you so much. Um, that brings us to, ready now? That brings us to our legislative public hearing. We have a, a public hearing on the annexation of 10-411 La Plata Road. Um, before I officially call this, uh, public hearing to order, I am going to act, ask the acting town clerk to review, uh, the procedures of a public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town of La Plata public hearings will be conducted in the following manner. At the discretion of the mayor, speaker's comments will be limited to three minutes. If you are joining the public hearing virtually and wish to speak for the record, you must announce your name when joining the meeting and state that you intend to speak during the hearing, uh, in the comments section. Keep your phone audio muted until called to speak. If you are attending in person, a sign-up sheet is provided at the entry of the cha, council chambers, and you should indicate that you wish to speak. The town clerk will add your name to the speaking, speaker's list. Registration to speak will end when the public hearing is open. Written documents for the record should have been emailed to the town clerk, who will have then presented to the mayor prior to the opening of the hearing. At the conclusion of this public hearing, if the record is held open and you have questions or would like to submit written documents for the record, please contact the town clerk prior to, to the close of record. By phone, 301-960-3507. By fax, 301-934-3965. Or email legislative@townoflaplata.org.
Thank you very much, Mr. Town Clerk. I would like to officially call the public hearing to order at 7:06 PM. Uh, Mr. Town Clerk, has the notice, uh, public hearing been properly advertised?
Yes, for the record, the public hearing was advertised in the Southern Maryland newspaper in May 13th and 20th, 2022 additions. The affidavit of the town clerk and related certificate of publication that the hearing was properly, uh, advertised in the Maryland Independent Newspaper. Certified letters were sent to the adjacent and contiguous properties and that I received an affidavit of signs being posted on all surrounding roadways. The affidavits are attached to the agenda.
Thank you. Um, Director Harrington, uh, do you have commissioners, uh, the recommendations, I should say?
Here we go. So on November 2nd of 2021, staff brought the annexation petition forward to the Planning Commission for a recommendation on the zoning request. Uh, they were requesting the R-21 zoning and the Planning Commission did agree that R-21 zoning would be the most appropriate for the use and the, uh, proposed annexation in accordance with our comprehensive plan.
Thank you very much. Um, does the applicant have anything that he would like to say? Okay, all right. Uh, before opening, oh, uh, I'm going to ask, sorry, this is an old one. Um, Council, uh, questions on this. We've seen this a couple of times now.
Yeah, yes, this is actually, you know, one of the main things we do as far as annexations, besides the big things, but to help people who find themselves in a situation of difficulty with water or sewer to bring it into our system to allow you then to continue operating as you have right now. So that's a great thing for us to do.
All right. Have there been, uh, Mr. Town Clerk, has there been any written documentation to, uh, documents to enter into the record?
No, Madam Mayor, there have not.
Okay. Um, is there anyone signed up, uh, this evening, Mr. Town Clerk, that would like to speak or on, uh, virtually or here in person?
There is no one online or in person to speak.
All right. Um, any additional questions for Council? Any closing remarks from the applicant?
You know, I'd say to the town for the opportunity, uh, I know it's been a tedious process, but getting this done, uh, thanks to you here. Uh, and I know some of the funding that I was looking into for the state didn't come through, and I believe Janine is still looking into some funding to help offset the costs. Cause it is a little pricey. Almost buy a couple of trash trucks for that. Uh, not to spoil.
That is a good point that I wanted to bring up and also for your information that I am still working on that. Uh, the Maryland Department of Planning did come back and state that it was not in compliance with the, um, priority funding area regulations because it didn't meet the density. Uh, so I have to file a priority funding area exception request to the Maryland Department of the Environment, um, at which time it then would get sent to, if approved, would get sent to the Health Department so they could release the funds. Of course. Of course, the Health Department is out of funds through this, the end of this fiscal year, which would be July. So we would be looking at FY twenty-three in order to get him the funding. So I am currently working on that.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you for your comments as well.
I would add too, if I could, Bobby Stahl. The uh, the applicant is working with the other neighbor directly next door for a shared pump station. And we have already run the water line and the sewer line over for the new house that is being constructed. But it will be a shared pump station between the two, which will be operated by the Town of La Plata. So it is something that they have been working with the next-door neighbor who is already annexed into the town. And this is kind of a benefit of a shared resource between the two.
Thank you for that. All right. Uh, seeing that there aren't any uh other questions from uh Council, I am going to say this concludes tonight's hearing, and Council will not hear any further comments or questions during this meeting. I recommend that um we close the record this evening based on the fact that we have uh no written documents or anyone to speak um on this. Can I get a consensus that uh the record can be closed? Yes, all right. Um, so it's done, dear. There you go. We're moving forward now. So we have to sign, uh, Mr. Manuel. Um, since it is uh closed, um, we can go on to the resolution that this evening.
Yes, Madam Mayor, since you have closed the record, uh, perfectly within practice to consider the resolution, resolution.
Fantastic. Next on the agenda is a resolution twenty-one dash twenty-five, ten-four-eleven, La Plata Road Annexation.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, ten-four-eleven, La Plata Road Annexation, two-point-three-zero acres. For the purpose of authorizing the annexation of two-point-three-zero acres, more or less of land into the corporate limits of the Town of La Plata, by amending the corporate limits of the town, establishing certain terms, conditions, and circumstances applicable to such land into the owners thereof, providing for the zoning of such land upon annexation and all matters relating to the annexation of such two-point-three-zero acres of land, more or less into the Town of La Plata.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. Do I have um a motion to accept resolution twenty-one dash twenty-five as presented?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept resolution twenty-one dash twenty-five, the annexation of ten-four-eleven, La Plata Road, at two-point-three-zero acres.
Second.
All right, uh, discussion. Any discussion?
Second.
I got you. A second now. Go on, discuss me.
Oh.
So this will be R twenty-one zoning, right? And so what, uh, so what happens because of the the planning department's issue in terms of their it's not, it's a not a priority funding area, but it's an exception. They have to wait till that's approved by planning? Department of Planning or I guess?
Yes. So with the R twenty-one zone, it does not meet the minimum density requirements. So I have to file a priority funding area exception application request through the Maryland Department of the Environment. Um, that is in itself a a process um that I'm trying to work through. Um, but I am working with Latoya Reader at the Health Department to obtain all the information I need so I can submit that. Um, it won't happen in the next month or two, but um hopefully it won't take too too long since it's such a small project. And once MDE approves the PFA exception, they will uh notify the Health Department so they can release funds when they can.
So just one question for Director Stahl. You said that you'd already started working on a pump station for this?
Yeah.
How if it wasn't approved yet?
Because i- it's for the other, it's on the other lot. It's on the lot that we've already annexed. And so we had to bring a pump station there for that house anyhow. But because these two properties are joined, they will be able to share that pump station that we were the the property owner is already purchasing the um pump station. So Ronnie Cans, so Ron Cans Custom Homes, who is building the current house over there, purchased this pump station, and we were, we've are hooking up the water and sewer lines over there for that property. But the annexation of Mr. Jeffrey's property is also going to be able to utilize the same pump station that's being put in for the one that's already annexed. So we weren't preempting the council in this situation. The bottom line is we had to put the pump station in.
So I'm glad you clarified. Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion, and it's been properly seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Manuel, for resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six, it says for consideration. Is it also for consideration uh and adoption?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so uh, would you please read resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six?
Yes, I will. Uh, ten-four-eleven, La Plata Road Annexation, two-point-three-zero acres. For the purpose of approving an annexation plan for the annexation of two-point-three-zero acres, more or less of land into the corporate limits of the Town of La Plata and all matters relating to a plan for annexation of such two-point-three-zero acres of land, more or less into the Town of La Plata.
Hey, do I have a motion to accept resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six as presented?
I move we accept resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to our next next piece of legislation, resolution twenty-two dash, by the way, congratulations. There you go. Moving on to resolution twenty-two dash thirteen, Tillman Lake Dam for introduction and consideration.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council Resolution Concerning Tillman Lake Dam Hydrology and Hydraulic Study and Design Plans for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for professional services for a hydrology and hydraulic study and design plans related to the dam at Tillman Lake and all matters related thereto.
Do I have a motion to accept resolution twenty-two dash thirteen as presented?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept resolution twenty-two dash thirteen, Tillman Lake Dam Hydrology and Hydraulic Study and Design Plans.
Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion?
Couple of weeks ago, correct? And we got the proposal. I think we got three different proposals. Fine. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, so I have a uh motion that has been properly seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I need to go into resolution twenty-two dash fourteen? Or is it a consensus that we will hold off on this?
I think we uh kind of beat that one up pretty good.
I think we did too. So we will wait and hopefully come back with um something in the future. Resolution, it's asking that we give the town manager up twenty thousand, parts of the twenty thousand. If he comes back, he can accept the one. Uh, Mr. Manuel, just to, uh, we did a resolution for the one sixty-nine-nine in January of twenty twenty-two. Um, since um we are questioning whether or not that uh that contract of January twenty twenty-two is still valid, since we have no indication that it has been canceled, um, we don't need to do this resolution tonight that just authorizes you to go into another negotiation with uh this company.
Yeah, I think if they honor the terms of the previous offer, then that resolution that was approved by Council, which suffice.
Okay, so we don't need to do twenty-two dash fourteen since we're not in favor of this new price of two oh nine nine.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we will skip that. Um, future work session topics?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, uh, some things just keep getting pushed, but we're going to try to get them to you. Uh, of course, June being a short month uh with as far as meetings due to conflict with the Maryland Municipal League. Uh, but we hope to bring before you uh the defunct HOAs for a future discussion. Uh, Purple Pipe, Kent Square Parking, uh wastewater treatment plant mod one, which is the upgrade, as well as uh personnel handbook updates that we've been contemplating.
And Mr. Manuel, something that we had discussed previously that um we were looking at maybe making sure that our first, when we have a regular month uh meetings, our first work session will be all legislative, and then our second work session will be things that are non-operations. Um, i- is that, can you explain a little bit more to Council and see if they agree with that?
One of the ideas is that it's sometimes it's difficult to turn around something from Council within a week to get it posted on an agenda. Uh, yeah, we do have a lot of items that are hanging, as well as we are trying to create a clear path for uh, let's say, items that the Council would like to see. I think we had talked about, uh, if you have something that you would like to discuss as a Council member, to communicate those to the mayor, and we can get those on the agenda as well, trying to clear, create some sort of pipeline to our agenda. And whether that be through me or Mayor James, uh, so that we can sort of try to get a more orderly uh process in place moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, it brings us to our public forum. If anybody would like to speak, I ask that you state your name, your address, and whether you're in the corporate town limits, and if you can limit it to three minutes, we'd appreciate that. Do we have anyone who would like to speak this evening? Hearing none, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Great meeting tonight.